Welcome to the joint meeting of the Calexico City Council and Heffernan Memorial Healthcare District Board Special Meeting Agenda. Today is December 13th, Wednesday, and it is a little past 5:34 PM. Today we're going to be having a combination meeting between the Heffernan Board members and the City Council. Our City Clerk is here in front of us. City Clerk, would you like to note attendance? Okay. And Board, just so you know, Escobar will not be, Mr. Escobar will not be joining us. Okay. Being that it is slightly a little different today, I believe that we can go ahead and start with our Pledge of Allegiance in general, and then we'll kind of top up a little bit of our responsibilities as Chairs. Now, let's see who, Mr. Dibera, would you like to lead us in our...
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Dibera. City Attorney? In this event, as far as an approval of the agenda, we ask the full Board as a combination for the approval. Yes? May I have an approval of the agenda or a motion, please?
So move.
Second?
First by Mr. Real, second by Mr. Pacheco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Do that as well? Everybody have two agendas?
No, just one. You have two?
Okay, what if we go then to the public comments? Do we have any public comments available right now? No? You could, if you like, I don't see very many that might want to, but we'll go ahead and do the normal stuff we have to do. Public comments, not to exceed three minutes, this is the time for the public to address the City Council on the special agenda items only. The Mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it's unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. The City Council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the City Council. Would you like to make any statements such as that?
Public comment time is open right now also.
Yes. Okay, any public comments with regard to today's special meeting out there? Okay, being that there is none, then I believe that the Board here would like to then move on to the item that we're here for today. Chair Bernal, if you allow me, our combined agenda here indicates that under discussion of potential items today, we have item number one, which is discussion of a potential agreement between the Heffernan Memorial Healthcare District and the City of Calexico for funding of pre-hospital care. So we have our City Manager here in front of us, Mr. Villa, if you'd like to chime in and give us some awesome information about the subject.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council, and members of the Heffernan Board. As you know, we've been in discussions with the Heffernan Board, some members of the Heffernan Board on separate occasions, and the City Council, about some of the challenges that we've had over the past couple of years. Over the last couple of years, especially as it relates to a program we have in the city, which is the ambulance, emergency response, medical response, pre-hospital care, and transportation services. We've actually shared with the Heffernan Board, and you also know that over the last couple of years, we've had a budget gap and a deficit in that program in the tune of about $500,000 to $1 million every year. We are not able to recuperate 100% of the services that it takes to provide the service of the ambulance, pre-hospital care, and the medical emergency services. So we've been having a budget gap over the last couple of years. If you recall, last year, we also had the same problem, and some of the alternatives that we had to be able to close the budget gap was to actually start contemplating reducing levels of service, and that led to the discussions about possibly closing Station Number Two and possibility of laying off some EMTs and personnel and reduce services. And through the gracious grant program that the Heffernan offered, we were able to avoid the layoff program. But we find ourselves this year with the same problem. We need to be able to find a way to correct that deficiency by either seek grant programs from other agencies, collaborating with other agencies, privatizing the services, and/or eliminating the service altogether, and have somebody else provide that service. And you, as a Council, directed me to start looking for alternatives to be able to develop strategies to close that budget gap. One of the strategies that we've been talking about is talking with the Heffernan District, our neighbors to the north here, to see if there was a possibility of having a program where the service could be subsidized and/or enhanced to be able to run a better program. As you know, we only have one ambulance service right now, and it has been very challenging to be able to keep up with the demand that that service provides. And then later on, I think the Fire Chief is going to give you an overview of how much, how much is the program taxing our resources. So with that, this item was put on the agenda, so you guys can have an open discussion with the Board and amongst yourselves to talk about the, either the need to keep the services, maintain the services as they are, or enhance the services, if you would like to call it that. And at this point, I'd like to invite our Fire Chief to give you some statistics and some information about the program.
Good evening to both Boards and to the community. Well, thank you guys for coming, shows that you guys are interested in your community. So tonight, if you want to take out the capita, please. Some of you may have seen this presentation. This presentation was made in response for our initial meetings with the Heffernan Group. So, Heffernan Group requested our emergency responses for 2016 and for the past five years. So what you're seeing on this first slide right here is a total number of emergency responses for 2016, and this is for agencies within the county. So the first one you see here is the City of El Centro Fire Department. Total emergency responses for them was 37, 71. The next one is Imperial County Fire Department, Brawley Fire Department, the Holtville Fire Department, and last but not least, it's the Calexico Fire Department with 4,580 calls. And that is to, this is up to date as of November. We have an estimated total calls, it's going to be roughly about 4,800 calls for the year for the City of Calexico. So the next one was the emergency calls just for the City of Calexico over the five-year span. If you look at the very first one in 2012, we had 3,910 calls. Up until today, it were at 2017, the call line was 4,691. The next slide that I want to bring up was on the issue of staffing. So how is the, our ambulance compared to the, our ambulance program compared with the other fire departments within this, within the county?
Chief, could I stop you real quick?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Emergency calls are police and fire?
No, no, sir. This is district, not police and fire, this is just the Fire Department and the ambulance program.
So, right now, none of those calls are for police?
No, sir. This is strictly the Fire Department and the ambulance program.
Because those are the same numbers that police gave. That's why I was thinking, are you sure they're not both?
I made this myself, I don't think so now.
They had said something about...
And I would say that, I would think that those numbers would be substantially different because they do have more calls of service than we do because they handle more service calls than we do in general. Ours are just strictly emergency calls that are recorded here, the numbers.
They could be fire or permit.
And for the most part, this one here is just our ambulance program, just our ambulance program. I'm not highlighting the Fire Department, that's going to be something separate, this is just our ambulance, our ambulance program. So in order to accomplish providing the services to the community, each department obviously have their personnel. City of El Centro, on duty, every shift, their minimum staffing is 11 personnel per day. They had to have 11 personnel per day. They have a grand total of total employees for them is 33 employees. The Imperial County Fire Department has 27 people on staff every day, minimal staffing, with a total of 81 people on shift. So basically, what I'm trying to show here is the difference in staffing as far as call lines as well. Brawley Fire Department has 27 full-time staff with eight people on duty. Our City of Calexico has 22 total calls, I mean, 22 total personnel with a minimal staffing of eight on duty per day. This letter here, I really like it because it shows the expenses, and this is not the total expense as far as the ambulance, the personnel, I'm just talking about the medical equipment, just the medical equipment, the medicines, the IVs, the equipment that we needed for it. If you look at it, they're fairly the same when compared across the board. City of El Centro has $41,000 roughly that they use on medical equipment, whereas we have $55,000 used for medical equipment. So this letter right here shows the collection rate for our medical emergencies, and we can see here's a substantial difference. City of El Centro, when they spend $55,000 a year on medical equipment, they don't recoup anything for them. Neither does the county, the Brawley. City of Calexico, we recoup $550,000 a year for our services, for emergency medical services, our ambulance program. Another one of the questions they asked is how do we, how do we bill, who do we use, and what is our rate for that? So we pay a company, it's Whitman, they pay, we pay them, and they cover our ambulance billing. This is also a five-year spreadsheet to show what they have collected for us. This year so far, and again, this goes back to November, is $506,000, and we pay them $47,000 to do the billing. And I think those are the brief analytical questions that the Heffernan Board had presented to us, had asked. I think we answered most of the questions that they had asked of me through this presentation. I can take questions on the presentation for now, if you like, if there's any.
But if I may, just to reiterate, as many of you know, the City of Calexico is the only city in the valley that owns its own ambulance service. Most of the other cities rely on the county, and the county contracts with service providers like Gold Cross and other companies. And now, recently, as I said, recently, over the last year, they've actually contracted with one company to cover the whole county, but we continue to operate our own because we have our 201 rights. One of the things that's unique, and I usually work unique, not because we're specialists, because of a set of circumstances, we, in terms of the chief, most of our calls are emergency calls related to because of our proximity to the border. We're at the border, at the border port of entry five, six times a day, chief.
Yes, sir.
And one of the other things that's unique about it is we have to transport those patients to El Centro or to Brawley, depending on the hospital, and that is where the uniqueness comes from. We actually have to tax our services that much because we don't have a hospital in town, we don't have, like other towns. So that's where we need to be able to look at the program to see if we are able to sustain the program the way it is right now, not because we want to do it, it's because we're unique, and we have a unique set of circumstances that require that. Anyways, at this point, you know, over the last couple, over the last several years, we've been having to spend a lot of money to support that program. In other words, the City's General Fund is supplementing the program in the tune of a half a million dollars a year, every year. So it's time for us to start looking at whether we can continue to support that service the way it is. That's kind of the crux of this meeting, is for you to have an open discussion to see if you would want to create a partnership to be able to, and my goal is to be able to say we enhance the program by making it better, by running more services or making it more efficient. So anyways, if you have any questions about any of the presentations?
I'd like to add a point, and it's something that everybody knows and it's very obvious. The two other major cities in the county, obviously, they have hospitals. We unfortunately, we don't, we do not have a hospital in our city, and because of that, our call volume is obviously doubled or increased because if we had a hospital in the city, it would probably be fair to say that most of those patients that call us for service would probably just drive themselves down to the hospital. Unfortunately, we don't have one, that's one of our challenges. So with the lack of emergency or medical care for the city, the ambulance program is the one that's picking up the slack. So this is the one that responds to the clinics to pick up the ill patients, the response to the residents to pick up the patients. And at the end of the day, we got to remember that the ambulance is business savvy, it's probably, it's not a good business, the ambulance in general, in 911. But we're a city, and that's providing a service, and I think that's what we need to remember, that it's a service to the community and to the citizens that me personally, I think that they deserve, and I just wanted to leave you with that note as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, what I was going to mention is that there wasn't any request for public speaking, but I believe that it'd be the time to ask, if you'd like to speak now, and go ahead and do that now, and then we'll jump over to, I was thinking, that we'll go ahead and allow you all first to chime in, and then maybe follow through a little bit of conversation there, and then jump over.
Sure.
Yeah, we're going to do public comment first. We're actually kind of excited because she actually wants to talk, we didn't have any before she got here.
You want this side or that side? Okay, that's fine.
So I'm not going to read all that stuff, Norma, you know all that good stuff, so you have three minutes.
What stuff?
Yeah, I've known that, legal stuff.
Norma Gilad, 839 East Brown Avenue, Calexico. I just want to reiterate that I feel that our Fire Department and emergency response team needs to continue, as has been stated before, we don't have a hospital, the, our Fire Department essentially is our hospital on wheels. I encourage both Boards to collaborate and work out an agreement that's beneficial to everyone. Also want to share something else, I also serve on the Oversight Committee for Measure H. And as everybody knows who knows anything about Measure H, Measure H was sold to the public as a source of funding for emergency and fire, I mean, for police and fire department and seniors. Unfortunately, that is not quite accurate, the language with which that levy was passed, the language actually allows for a Council to pull that money into general funds. But be that as it may, there's a process and there's a protocol. So if monies are going to be expended, the Oversight Committee exists to, you know, oversee the expenditures. Unfortunately, several years ago, there was expenditures that happened without the oversight review of the Measure H Oversight Committee, and I encourage and I charge the Council to look at that, those expenditures, because those expenditures, in my opinion, were unauthorized and illegal and owed back to Measure H. Whether the city is in the position right now to pay it back, probably not, but that those things need to be said and need to be acknowledged that it's true, there was no oversight over those expenditures. And at that time, Mr. Quinn indicated that he had the authorization of the Council in terms of approving those budget expenditures. I don't know whether that's accurate or not, but that's what the information that I have. So, we still haven't had a Measure H review meeting to tell us where these expenditures, because anyone I talked to tells me, you know, there's no money there, the money's already committed, but under whose authorization, under whose review? So I guess that's a job for the new City Manager, the current Senior Manager, to talk with the incoming person, because if not, it's just going to get swept under the rug and business as usual in Calexico, and that's not what we want. You know, there's a source of money there, and if it isn't, then we need to investigate why it isn't there. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Just a comment to what you just said now, I'm sorry, here, why don't you come up here? Here's a little statement, Norma. We were able to give this out to everybody beforehand, and that has, that's the latest on the Measure H. I tried giving you a call last night to kind of talk about that one. But thank you very much for that input, one more, and hopefully we can move on, Mr. Purdy. Three minutes.
Honorable City Council and Honorable Heffernan Board, I'd really like to say that, you know, our ambulance service, the Fire Department, you know, 10% of your calls is probably my family, my mother, my brother, and I thank God for you guys, because you guys are there and you have that extra care for them. I like what you're doing today, looking for a partnership, but I, because today, everything's partnerships, collaborations, but I don't see a very important component to it. There's the other person that provides services county-wide, which is private, but they provide service to the public, our public, our people, our community, our family. So I guess in your discussion with your collaboration, because maybe the offset can go to this private company, not burning in the city with a higher cost, because today everything's in collaborations with a private company. So I guess we need to explore as how we function with our monies. And I believe being good stewards of the money that is provided to the city and to the Heffernan Board, you guys need to be good stewards. So let's look for those collaborations. We need that one more partner here to see how we can distribute, you know, everybody getting a fair share, and you know, maybe the Heffernan not putting out 700,000, maybe 350, and looking for that discussion. So in any case, you guys do a terrific job, and I really think in my heart, my brother is alive because of you guys and my mother. Thank you.
I'm sorry? I don't know if that would be a good idea right now, since it's a special meeting. I know that Measure H, and that's why I think it was important that the City Manager allow everybody to have the updated information and how it all plays. Let's see if maybe your question's going to be answered within all of this, because I'm pretty sure it might, that that is part of a bigger picture. Yeah? Or if you guys want to go ahead and, Norma, just I don't want to kind of go out of any order. Go ahead, Norma. Next time, answer the phone when I call you, okay? I actually have important stuff to tell you when I call you.
So my question is in regards to the asterisk note, says the residual amount of Measure H historically has been transferred to General Fund to help subsidize fund deficit as per City Council authorization. I was, I don't know when this started, but when the Measure H Committee was put together and I was there, there was nothing about being transferred to General Fund. The money was monitored by Oversight, it was, so I don't know when this happened, but you know, I questioned the historically, because it wasn't there the first couple of years or during the time that I was there, and I have my notes and I have my emails.
What was not there historically?
It was not historically automatically transferred to General Fund, it was expended or kept in the fund, but there was no, like, turnover.
I'm looking at our City Manager, because I can explain it, or you can explain it?
We don't know.
Yeah. It's actually an important thing what we're talking about right now as far as Measure H, so it is worth it.
I think it's good to know that that specific piece of document is not for discussion right now, I think it was more a supplement, supplement information for you to digest, but we're not talking here about Measure H, we're talking about the ambulance.
That's fine, I'm not talking about Measure H, I'm talking about the accuracy, I was saying historically has been transferred to General Fund, that is not accurate.
Again, that's, that point is not part of the discussion today.
But it's important to know. Thank you.
Okay. I think I'm gonna help, I'm just gonna help to blend in a little bit about why we have Measure H here, okay? In this discussion, a lot of it is about the collaboration and what the city has done for themselves. And in discussing what the city has done for themselves to take care of the uniqueness that we have in the area of the medical services needs, and we're talking hospital and even now ambulance, is that in two events, the city decided to tax themselves. One, the first one was with the Heffernan, inventing Heffernan and having the taxation on your property tax there, and then number two was Measure H. So those two different additional funds that the city actually voted to tax ourselves with is because the city understands we are unique, and the city and the voters understood that we needed to take care of ourselves, because we do not receive any federal reimbursement. So that's why Measure H kind of tends to play into these conversations, because there was a committee, and the committee was making decisions, and they did commit. And what you're looking at right now is because each year, those commitments that were taking place back in the day still affect what is available from that funding, being that that funding has about two and a half, oh, sorry, about 2.2 each year as far as revenue. However, it's already committed, it's already subsidizing police and fire, and those decisions were made by the committee way back then, except it did get confusing. There wasn't a way to enable to know exactly how it all ended up, because they haven't met in a while. However, we're giving you guys all this information to be updated on it, because there is a status on it, it does still have a flow of revenue coming in, however, the majority of the Measure H fund, it's not a very old fund, but the majority of it is committed. And what Mr. Villa is trying to explain is that there is a residual, but the residual is tight. Okay? So, the residual amount left over after paying each year's commitment that we have already had, and after knowing what our revenues that came in.
Goes to the General Fund.
That's about 130, 150, you said? I thought it was like 50, but... Understood?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah? Are we okay? You guys have any questions on that? That was important, because like we said, that tends to be what we, the city itself is doing to itself, to have extra cash. As you say, you know, it was sold to the community for public safety and all that, well, that is what it has been committed to for quite a number of years. Any questions? Do you want to...
Yeah, so I think I've provided you a summary of last year's Measure H expenses, and if you look, if you look at the, I don't have the document in front of me, but if you look at the first column, is the total amount that we get on a given year, and then the commitment levels that the Measure H Committee committed to several years ago. One of them was to be able to pay for a bond that the city authorized and the Measure H authorized, that's for debt service. There's also a commitment to support the Police Department, I think it's about $800,000. There's also a commitment of about $400,000 for the Fire Department, and at the end, there's a residue, residual, I'm sorry, that is, in the past, has been absorbed by the General Fund based on the City Council direction, discretion for the last two years. This year, the residual amount of 222, I believe, is separated from the General Fund, but it's one of the, one of the options that the City Council has to be able to close budget gaps. So it's still, it still hasn't been absorbed by the General Fund, but it's still there, and it's, again, an alternative to be able to close the budget gap if we have a deficit this year.
All righty. Understood? Any questions on that? All righty. All right, so we have our public comments completed. I believe that if we'd like to start to our, to our right.
Yeah, I just had a, I had a question in, in this case, you know, we're here to, to maybe establish a possible partnership, but why haven't you gone with Gold Cross or any, you know, outsourcing companies, instead of keeping or absorbing that cost from the general fund?
So, what was the question on that?
Yeah, the question is, why hasn't the city, or why didn't the city go with Gold Cross, since, you know, there's, you know, they're supporting the, the fire department and the ambulance services from the city's general fund?
Let me answer that. I think that's a policy question from the city council. We, we started to have budget problems last year. That's certainly one alternative that the city council has explored, as, if I may speak for you. But before we, we privatize with Gold Cross, the city council wanted us to explore partnerships, partnerships with local entities, and that's what we're doing here today. That is still an alternative to be able to privatize that service through Gold Cross or the county, the county, for example, the county has, the whole county is privatized with Gold Cross. So, that's something that we may look at in the future, if, you know, discussions here don't produce any, any, any meaningful results.
Another question. Let's say we do go into partnership with the city of Calexico and, and give you guys the $700,000 per year that you guys are requesting. What, what's gonna happen after, after that third year? Are we, are we just supposed to wait to see if the city gets better, and maybe you guys are able to, to keep subsidizing the fire department? Or, or, or then will we be back at the same point? And maybe, you know, you guys looking to privatize or coming back to us again or to someone else?
That's a, that's a very loaded question. I think, I think it's, the expectation that we have is that we're going to be able to grow our revenues over the next three years, and we're also, in discussions with the chief, we are also talking about how to maximize our return in terms of, of collections, for example. I think, I think there's an ability for us to be able to recreate and collect more from the insurance companies or Medi-Cal, Medicaid. We have to do a couple things before we do that. We have to be able to do a user fee study and amend that, and, and we've been made aware that perhaps where our, our fees for service are, are low.
Are low, yeah.
And, and we might wanna go higher. How much higher is, is gonna be up, part of the city council to decide. And if it goes any higher, then we might be able to close that gap that we have. So, so that's, those are things that we can do in the future to be able to close the, the negative or, or the, the gap.
And, and one thing I'd like to mention also, like I stated yesterday in our Heffernan Board meeting, obviously, the ambulance rate study is, is important, is vital for this, for the ambulance program, and, and it's gonna get done. The other one I wanted to mention was the process of grants. You know, I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but our, our city hired a grant company, and they're producing really well. And one of the items on their, on their list is helping out with the ambulance. So, so we're making, I think we're taking big steps to, to support it. So, with the three years, it gives us time to plan, time to prepare for, for, and to improve the service.
How long is that rate study gonna take?
You know, I, I personally, I don't know what, what the company, what their turnover rate is, I, I couldn't tell you that, I'm sorry.
I was talking to Mr. David Dale, I think is here today, and, and we might be able to speed the process up possibly over the next two or three months. Yes?
All right. The other issue with Gold Cross is we don't know what they're gonna give us, where they're gonna be stationed, and how many units where they're gonna be allotted in Calexico. They might, they might have an ambulance in Hebrew and say, hey, they need you in Calexico. Response time is gonna be a lot, lot, you know, longer than what we have here if we had our own people. That was one of the concerns we had. We didn't wanna do that, have, leave the residents waiting for the, the response team to get here.
That the quality of the service would be a little...
I think that's what you mentioned yesterday, that station would be put in Hebrew.
We don't know, I, I'm just saying.
Well, that was the initial, I think, I believe the initial proposal was...
Gold Cross is right in front.
Yeah, but that's gonna, that's gonna change, I, I think, at the beginning of this year, that's changing. They won't be here anymore.
In, in this case, Mr. Pacheco, I understand what you're saying, you know, that obviously the response would be faster in here, but, uh, I'm aware that obviously, Gold Cross takes that into account. If, if a city goes in, obviously, you know, if, if they need to staff more people or, or ambulances for...
Is it the response time? As far as I, as far as I know, the response time has to be within a certain...
Yeah, 20 to 30 minutes?
For everybody.
Yes, so, like, like, in the city, we have, we're, we're able to set our standard, and our standard is, is nationwide for the fire department and the ambulance program, that's within a five-minute response time. So, the time you call to the time someone is at your door, is supposed to be with a quick five-minute response.
And I'm assuming...
Right now with, with...
All ambulance service have to keep that standard?
No, sir. So, so Gold Cross right now, when they're responding to the city, although they are, like you said, they are across the street, and, and they do help us out, you know, with their over, over calls, they fall under a mutual aid process. So, the time limit is expanded. So, they don't have to meet that five-minute standard.
But the city can, can make them have the five-minute standard.
Yeah, if the city wants to, they can say, yeah, and that'd be up, up to them to...
So, what I'm trying to say is, contrary to what people believe, the city can tell Gold Cross or any ambulance service, you need to have, be within five minutes.
I'm probably sure they could, I, I don't, I wouldn't be able to tell that.
City sets the standard.
I'd like to ask, can I ask something? Can you tell me how long it is that your brain can go without having oxygen before it becomes brain dead?
Yeah, that, that, as far as like putting out an actual time, I professionally probably couldn't tell you the exact time, but it's not very long, it doesn't take very long, because each person's different, obviously. It could be, it could be fewer than three minutes to five minutes, it could be less. Yeah.
No, but the, the reason I'm saying is because if it's gonna take you five minutes for the local response for here, and if they do decide to put the station in Hebrew, we're gonna have a lot of people...
Why isn't Gold Cross here?
Okay, so, so what if we kinda go back into our routine? Yeah. All righty, so, Mr. Martinez, are you okay then with the, the questions you've presented?
Yeah, for now, yes.
Sorry, guys.
Mr. Villa, do you have a question?
I didn't have a question, I had a response, but, but I think it's probably...
Okay.
Conversation went on, so.
Uh, Ms. Romo?
That's okay.
Mr. Valdez?
I, I would like to, I would like to say that, my name is Nerma...
Wait, Mr. Valdez, is, is, is Mr. Valdez gonna, did you have anything?
I'm, I'm...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I can hear you guys all the way over there, I can hear you, you're speaking.
I would like to say that I'm in favor of helping the city. I understand that we don't have a hospital, and it's Hefferman's obligation to, to support the city and subsidizing the fire department, even if it's whatever amount the, the both parties agree, the Heffernan Board with the city, it would be a good idea to subsidize and help them. But we need to have a plan, we need to have a strategy. We cannot just go and let's pay this amount, or give this amount this year or two, three years, and then what's gonna happen next? Like you said already, I, I don't have a plan, I don't know, but we need to know, we have to start right now, and start putting the, the numbers and studies, but let's do it seriously. That, that's the only thing that I will ask. That's all I have to say.
Yes, I, I agree, I, I, I think I'm in favor of helping and subsidizing the city. And the thing is, this meeting is to initiate a conversation or keep the conversation going, and, and make a plan, make some type of arrangement where it works for both of us.
If I may say, I, I gotta say, disagree. I don't, I don't think we're in any obligation to subsidize the city. I think, yes, we can help the city because we have before. And in this case, you know, these monies would be going for the fire department and, yes, for the EMTs, but, you know, they, they would be directed to salaries and not, salaries for the fire department and for firefighters, which we're not obligated to, to contribute to. What I can get on board, if, if, you know, both ports take it into consideration, is helping out with the cost of operation of ambulances. That's, that's different. Whenever, let's say, say you, you receive 100 calls per month, right? What is your cost of operating that ambulance those 100 times? Then, you know, that's something that maybe the Heffernan Board can, can subsidize, right? You know, the EMTs, the ambulances, something like that. Otherwise, if it's just a number of $700,000, it's gonna be covering maybe that time that, you know, obviously, yes, they're, they're for, for response time, but it would just be monies that would be, that the Heffernan Board could be using for something else.
The last one. I tend to disagree with Mr. Martinez, but we're all entitled to our opinions, and I agree with Ms. Romo and Mr. Valdez. I, I highly, highly feel that it is part of our obligation for the Heffernan Board. We are the ones that lost the hospital. We are the ones that now the fire department has to deal with a problem that should have belonged to Hefferman. And it is our responsibility. If, if we were to have somebody driving the ambulance, we have to pay for that time that they're driving the ambulance to do the services that Hefferman should be providing, which is not being happening right now. And, and last night it was mentioned, how do you put a price on a person's life? How do you say, well, how much is, is a person's life worse? How much, how much, where does Hefferman come in? Where do we come in? We have to be part of this. I mean, there's no way to say that it's not our responsibility. It is our responsibility, because we lost Hefferman Hospital, we lost it. And now, the burden is falling on the fire department. There are hospitals on wheels. If we don't have ambulance services here, it's bad enough that they also have to take care of the border. And, and that's, why do we do that? Because they're human beings. I don't care if they don't live here, or, or they don't have, you know, permanent residence, you still have to take, that's called having compassion and caring about people.
Humane, the humane thing to do.
Yes, I know, but that's what, I know you can, but I'm just saying that it is our responsibility, because we, the situation that we're in with the ambulance services is because there's, there's not a hospital here.
Something...
So, I feel that, you know, I know that, I know that, I know that we just can't give you $700,000. You know, we receive a little bit over $800,000 a year. Uh-huh, so, so what do we do? If we take away that amount of money from us, and I know we have money, but we are also planning on doing some projects, we are willing to collaborate with you, but it's gotta be, collaboration means when, when group of people come together, it's not just Hefferman giving $700,000, and, you know, you also have to come together and help pay for that amount of money that's being left over. You have over $200,000 that are being left over on your Measure H. Why can't you devote that money to that? Instead of wanting to close your budget, what's, what's more important? You know, and you also hired a grant writer. The last time that we, that we met and we gave you in June, a little bit over $500,000, we told you, we asked you, please start looking at getting some grants. Please start looking to see what we can do. And we're back to the same thing, we're back to zero. I mean, it's been, what, eight months since we gave you the money? And have any grants been written? Can anybody answer them?
Let me ask you the question.
Yes, we've, we've had a couple, we've had two turned down letters. We received one grant, and that's gonna help the, the fire department purchase equipment for the fire department.
For how much, the, the grant?
You know how much it was? Is that like 24?
Twenty-something thousand.
Yeah, 24,000, I think that's what it was.
Twenty-something thousand.
So, it's, it's... But those are the ones that we received so far, there's a couple that are still pending, so, we're moving toward that. We understand that that's, it's been an issue that we haven't tried hard before to do, and now we are.
I like, I like to add a little bit, just wanna make sure that there's an understanding that, that what we're doing here today is not to subsidize the fire department, not to subsidize the city, is, we're talking about a program that the city offers, that the city also invests, and that's the ambulance, emergency care, pre-hospital care, and transport service, which, which, I mean, no other city in the valley has that burden. When, when I started to talk about how unique we are, I, I said, we're not special, we have a unique set of circumstances, where we have a border, and we have a large number of calls related to the border, and we don't have a nearby hospital, so we have to spend a large amount of time transporting patients back and forth to El Centro. So, that eats up at the operational cost of the program. So, that's what we're trying to talk about today, is the program itself. The ambulance, emergency, medical services, pre-hospital care, and transport services, that is, is really, really becoming a burden to the city.
Mr. Villa, to, to answer that, I mean, you're saying that it's a burden to the city, then, then, then why not let Gold Cross handle it? That's what I'm saying.
And that may very well be an option that the city explores as a policy.
All right. All righty, so, let's move on to Mr. Pacheco, maybe.
The, the reason why, we, 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 we don't wanna lose any employees, and if we, if we go with Gold Cross, we're gonna have to do something like that, and we'll have a reduction in force. So, we're trying to maintain, with what we should, is maintain our own city with our own people. And the high call volume is an issue, and, and we do the best we can with what we have, with 22 guys, and we need to add, add to that. But hopefully, we can get healthy in, in, in two or three years, healthy with, with the projects we have committed to the city, but it's gonna take a while. But right now, the commitment is working together to see if we can come up with a little strategy, but it's, it's funding, basically, that's, that's the bottom line, the funding.
I, I like very much what former Councilman Peroni said, and, and you also said, that issue here is, is of a very humane and caring manner. I, I really wanna see us collaborate, so that we can provide better services to the community, and free up or lessen the burden on the fire department, and make more efficient the ambulance and emergency services. We may have to later privatize, but I think it's extremely important that we come together and we collaborate. And one point that was made is very important, but we need to realize, we're initiating today, but it is important that we plan and strategize, and we have some kind of action plan. But I, I am in favor of this collaboration. Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're barking up the wrong tree. I think, I think that we need to understand that first time the city needed money for police services, it went to Measure H. As you all can see, you know what happened with that, it's gone. They found a way to spend it, and there's money in the bank to build a new facility, but nobody's done nothing, the money's gone. I think they coming to, last time, when they went to Heffernan Memorial for money, I remember you guys saying, this is the last time, we're doing it once, that's it, not again. Now, here's another three years. I think it's very, pardon me for being, I guess, the bearer of, of bad news or, or being realistic, but the reality is that we, we, we are a special city. And the reason we're special is because, you know, we have a burden with our police and fire that no other city has, and that is Mexicali. But has anybody in this room called our congressman to... But has anybody in this room called our congressman to ask him what he's going to do to help us because this is a federal problem? Nobody has.
Yes, I have, I have.
Well, then, nothing's happened. Nothing's happened, right? And, and so that's, that's, that's a big issue. Our city's 40,000 people, but we have six day at any time. Our ambulance services are always, as you can see, we're the highest calls in the, in the county. Not just that, but the big problem that nobody's talking about is our payer mix. Our payer mix of insurance versus people from Mexicali that are going to come get service and not ever pay. That's why a hospital here will never work. Because the people will cross over, go to the hospital, get $100,000 worth of, you know, life-saving services, and guess what? They go back, that's it, done. You can't charge them. And so we have a, a special circumstance. And, and as much as, you know, if Heffernan wants to give us 80% of your yearly income, that's, that's great. I'll, I'll receive it, no problem. The city will receive it. But, but I think we're putting a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound. The city is a $14 million city. That's what we make every year. I think it's very, there's nothing coming down the pipeline that I think for the next couple of years is going to make us a 17, 18 million dollar city, which we need to be because, I know this isn't a budget meeting, but I can tell you that every year that's coming, our insurance is going up at least a million dollars. So we need to come up with another $3 million within the next three years to cover our insurance costs, our CalPERS retirement costs. There's a lot of things happening, a lot of moving parts. We do need the help. I mean, I'm not going to lie, but I just don't know if, if we are delaying the inevitable. Speaking of outsourcing, you know, sometimes councils, you know, politicians don't want to make the tough decisions that need to be made. I believe strongly the city needs to live within its means. Measure H is gone. Now, we might take Heffernan down with us. That's just, that's, that's, that's the way I feel. As far as the service, look, I, I don't know, but I can tell you that other cities have got rid of their ambulance service because it's a negative on your, on your, on your general fund. It is, you know? And I don't know, I've never had Gold Cross come to me and then collect physical ambulance to see if the service is better or not. I, I couldn't tell you. But as far as response times, them coming in, if anything, the city could actually charge Gold Cross for their, our 201 rights and actually make money instead of spending money. But you're, like, like Mr. Martinez said, this is a policy issue for the council. And I guess if I could, if I could make it really simple, if you guys want to give us your money, I'm, I'm for it. But, you know, I don't, I don't know to what extent, $700,000 a year for the next three years, I don't think, like I said, I think it's a, it's a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound. That's what I'm thinking. And maybe a loan, if it was a loan, that way the city could be responsible for paying it back or something like that. I don't know. I don't know exactly how this could work, but if you guys are willing to help, we'll take it, but just be smart. Be smart.
Can I answer him? Last night at the meeting, I, I suggested that we lend you the money. I suggested that we, maybe not the full amount of money, maybe we, we also would like to, to collaborate, but lend you the part, your share, and then pay it within, I don't know. I'm just brainstorming right now. Pay it within five years or whatever, you know?
Very similar, like what we did to our water department. We took 3.5 million dollars just to, just to come out even. Again, we're stealing, we're stealing from Peter to pay Paul.
That would show to me that, that we are trying to work together and, and as you said, Mr. Real, not throwing everything to Heffernan, you know, having Heffernan pick up the whole 700,000. And I know that's not what, what you're trying to do, but I, I think that if we were to lend you your share and you pay it back in a certain amount of time with some type of, this is my idea, I, I'm speaking for myself, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but well, this is what we're here for, to kind of brainstorm. And I will, I will go back to what I'm saying, you know? It's the Heffernan's responsibility to help out. I mean, we have, we have, we have money, yes, we do. We have more money than you do.
And you guys do help out. I mean, you guys buy defibrillators and ambulances and all these things, and, you know, like, again, I'm just saying, if you, if you bring in $800,000 a year, you're going to give us 700, the city council might as well take over Heffernan. What do, what do we need a board for?
No, but, but that's not, I mean, we have money in the bank. That's not, you know, we're not going to...
But you have big projects.
My point is that...
You have projects that you need.
Yeah, that we, we need to have money for our projects. But my point is that, that we, Heffernan needs to be held responsible for helping the ambulance services. I mean, there's no ifs, buts about it. We need to help.
Maybe you guys can take it over.
Okay, may I ask a question? When, when the Heffernan has been tasked to keep the emergency care center open, do I understand it correctly that there is a subsidy agreement that the Heffernan is paying to ensure that we have doctors at that location?
We used to, we used to.
You used to do that?
Yeah.
You're no longer subsidizing the doctors?
No, we did that with Pioneer Hospital.
Okay. When, when Heffernan did that and they were subsidizing the doctors, it probably was the same concept that you just said. Now you feel that responsibility because overall, Heffernan is responsible to ensure that there's medical services. So that natural fit of providing the, I'm not sure why you don't do it anymore, but I kind of didn't understand at first why that was happening and why that subsidy was in existence. But then I understood, well, of course, we don't have a hospital, and the funding that Heffernan has was to ensure that that was always available. So you did that for many number of years, right? So when this idea comes up, to me, in the discussions we've had, seems also as a very natural fit that the Heffernan also provide ambulance services as well. If we're also in the area of medical services, well, then the ambulance is the natural fit. But I wanted to comment about the chief's presentation. It is absolutely frightening to see how our staff is burdened with that many calls and with such little staff. I never had seen that before, to see a chart where it compared the amount of calls that the other cities have. However, their resources are five times more than ours. So when we come around and we say that we are unique, that chart in itself, if you understood that, that tells you how unique and how burdened our staff is. And in, in truth, I mean, a lot of people do see this as maybe our department being like anyone else, and just they are not. They are just absolutely different. I think that, meanwhile, all of us as leaders understand that difference. This conversation focuses where it needs to go. Because if we want to talk about general budget stuff, that doesn't work when it comes down to our first responder services because, yes, we have contacted Mr. Vargas's office. Yes, I have talked to Tomas, and they have, have been really heated conversations as a matter of fact, because it is kind of hard to, to understand, which is something I haven't understood for a long time, why there isn't any more consideration for border cities such as ourselves that are so impacted. We definitely have a demand, and it definitely has a really high price, and, and we don't, we just can't afford it. And it, and it's just that way. So there is something that we also have to pay attention to here, that the chief is indicating that he does have a plan. I spoke to him as, as well, and there is at least a three-year period of time where he realizes that there is some work to do to lift up this station, to become much more self-sufficient. For example, what he's talking to you about, about learning that we have a billing system that may not be up to par, and that we have been losing a lot on revenue in that area. And, and we had a discussion about that, too. And naturally, I mean, once you start to repair that area, that flow is going to come in very differently. So long as we have an appropriate billing system that's billing accordingly, the way it should be, that, that's a solution right there in itself, and I would say it wouldn't be more than months.
Do we have projections on that? On how much revenue we're going to bring in?
Right, right now, no, because we'd have to do the, the study first to find out exactly what we're going to do.
Because see, that's something important. If, if you have projections on the next three years, how we can come up with...
Increase the revenue.
Increase the revenue enough to either pay back Heffernan what they're going to loan us or, or however they're going to do it, then that's a whole other story. I'm, I'm worried, I'm worried about taking on a loan that we can't repay.
Right.
So the thing is, is that there is something, they're very serious, that will totally, it's a game changer, what you have discovered, Mr. Valdez, and I'm very appreciative that you did that. Because that is probably something that, that will surprise us all, probably, on how that can be different. Because if we're looking at a minimum charge for Medi-Cal on a pickup for a, for an ambulance can be $1,000, we're nowhere close to that.
Or has...
And if we can even charge just that as a basic fee, I mean, we're looking at doubling revenues. So that needs to be respected, that you do have a plan at this point, and that although the assistance that the Heffernan provided back then, I am sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, we're way beyond the, that point. I'm sorry, we're not going to be able to take that anymore. We are so thankful to the Heffernan for what occurred last year. What occurred last year was something also unique, always unique, right, Mr. B? You had a new, new council? You had a new city manager? You had circumstances that were pretty complex, and it was a solution that wasn't expected to be an overall, every day, every year solution. That's understood. We have seen some changes since then, in the eight months, because there is a plan. There is now some discoveries in, in things that can be done. Yes, there has been. However, I also want to remind everyone that when we were this close to having outsourced one of our departments, this council chose not to. And that was a lot of work that our administration did to get us to that point of almost making that switch, and it didn't occur. So would that occur with this department here? Maybe, maybe not. But if we go and we look at how it happened last time, we were really close. And, and a lot of what happens here in this council was what Mr. Hodge is saying, and what is, again, unique to this community, is that the community needs a certain special kind of servicing because we don't have a hospital. The staff that we have is experienced in that, in that already, years of knowing the customer, years of knowing exactly who lives where and what they need. And so, yes, this council does want to think about outsourcing and not have to go to that solution just yet and partner this way. However, all, a lot of different things that need to be recognized, and, and the demand that this city has is looking at the situation where we have a group of people that really love their job, and they do a great job at it. And in these graphs that you just saw right now, please respect those, those are the truth. We have people who are overworked, and some of us say they're overpaid, but, you know, maybe they're not. And so we, we, as, as a city, I know that our council would like to totally see all of these very difficult things beyond us, but it is all about money, and we will be making sure our commitments as, as a director and as a city do our part. And we are definitely willing to even look at an, an adjusted amount, not just the 700, for example, because I know that the staff itself is also willing to come to the table and, and continue to commit to make this happen.
Madam Mayor, Madam Chairman, talking about the community, can, we have two minutes if we represent the community and we actually play a part in health and safety?
Yeah. Mr. Gonzalez, if you don't mind, we need to not do this very often because we are within a very complex conversation.
I understand that.
Okay? Meetings start at 5:30, sir. Okay? So if you'd like, go ahead and make your comments, but if you can stick to two minutes, that'd be really helpful.
I, I...
If you can stick to two minutes, that'd be really helpful. Go ahead.
I want to, I'm a Spanish because it's being recorded, and I want to use this recording. Quiero hablar español y no vengo a criticar ni nada negativo. Y a veces lo que uno habla no es porque quiere hacerlo, es porque las cosas como pasan. Y uno trabaja bien duro para hacer una feria de salud y seguridad. Anda como loco allá voluntario, pidiendo naciones y todo. Y es triste cuando aquí traigo una proclamación.
Mr. Gonzalez, this is a special meeting, you need to make your comments. It's a special meeting, I need to please.
Quisiera que se van a hacer sus arreglos y todos tomen en cuenta a la comunidad porque te hizo una proclamación donde trabajaron juntos. Heffernan y la ciudad se dio la proclamación aquí, uno va a hacer una feria entre los dos, y, y las cosas no salieron bien. No quiero que cosa más. No vengo a criticar. Quisiera hablar más y luego se va a hacer, pero tengan mucho cuidado lo que van a hacer. Hablan de la comunidad. Nosotros hemos luchado más de 20 años por tener salud. La ambulancia no sale de las Kennedy. Todos los días, todos los días, tres, cuatro veces, y no se nos toman en cuenta. Salgan a la comunidad, salgan a hacer town hall meetings, hablen con el pueblo. Yo soy voluntario y ustedes quieren mirar y criticarlos, no. No es bueno. Lo hago porque es la necesidad. No, aquí estuvimos a hacer, hicimos una Health and Safety Fair, a dos semanas antes nos sale Heffernan con su feria el mismo día. Ahí está la proclamación. Y, y los otros directores no saben lo que pasó.
Mr. Gonzalez, do you have any comments about today's meeting?
No más quiero que, que tomen en cuenta a la ciudad.
Do you have any comments about today's meeting, Mr. Gonzalez?
Hay que, yo pensaba que era otra meeting.
Do you have any comments about today's meeting?
I'm amazed that I thought it was a city council meeting, it's a special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Just take into consideration the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Okay. No, that wasn't going to be such a great idea.
And I, I just want to say that what, what you're saying, Javier, is true, that the community should be here. And, you know, we have a meeting today, and it saddens me to see that how many of you are from the community and how many of you are staff people. You know, that saddens me, and, and that's what...
And it's helpful.
And, you know, if, if we want to listen to what people, our people have to say, but they don't come, so, so we're doing what we feel is the best for this community, Javier. So, you know, okay. You have a point. Yeah.
5:30 next time, Mr. Valdez.
I, I just would like to say to the council, how do you feel about what I just mentioned about saying that if you don't have the, that money to pay us right now, but if we were to, to do something for, with that, would you, the concept of paying us back, of us lending you that money, would that be something that maybe you could talk about your, would that be something that would be worthwhile talking about? What do you think, gentlemen?
I would, I would like to, again, just kind of echo, echo my comments about how sometimes the, and even the past council, but councils, you know, we're, the city, we're, I, I think we're, again, barking up the wrong tree. I think that we need to live within our means. I think that if, if Heffernan can help us out, great. I don't think we have the, the way to repay you. I, that's just, that's unless the finance director can, or, or, I know that there's a way to see the cup half-full and say, you know, within the next three years, we're, I mean, we're going to bring in another $4 million worth of revenue to balance our budget, but the reality is I don't, I don't see that happening. And I'm, that's, that's just myself. I don't see development coming that fast to bring our city up to an 18, 20 million dollar city, how we're, how we were spending in the, in the, in the past. Our city manager and the council right now has done a great job of bringing us back to reality, back to where we need to be. But as everybody knows, todo sube menos los sueldos. Everything's getting more expensive, our insurance, our CalPERS, many, everything's going up, except the revenues. The city revenues aren't going up, they're stagnant, and so I, I don't know. That's, that's a question for our city manager, our finance directors, to see if a loan could be paid back or, or not. But again, just, just remember, Measure H, gone, no funds, the city doesn't have the funds to maintain its own ambulance service, and, and now we're here to ask you guys. I, I personally think the council needs to take a lot tougher stance on, 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 on things. We're, we're willing to ask for loans and move money here and move money there. We're willing to do everything except make the tough decisions that we're really supposed to make, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dan. Mr. Hodge, would you like to turn it?
Oh, boy. I think Councilman De Real makes some very important points, but I don't, I don't see what is wrong with at least coming together and discussing it and, and seeing what's possible. I, I don't, I don't think that that's going to hurt, and who knows? I, ooh, I just, I, we talk about realism, but I, I just fight that to be that cynical or realistic. I, I want to be hopeful, but with your eyes open and clearly seeing things in an objective way. I mean, not, not to be naive, but I, I still am hopeful. And I think that it would not hurt to, to, to look at what you're proposing. That's it.
This is called cognitive dissonance.
Mr. Pacheco?
The, the bottom line is, if you don't help us now, the end result is that we're going to have to do a reduction in force, and there's no money to support what we have right now. So that means letting go of personnel, looking for another option to bring in, somebody to come in and take care of that service for us. And we don't know what it is or where they're going to be and how many ambulances they're going to offer. We're going to be at their mercy to say, well, take it or leave it. We're going to be stationed over here, and our response time won't be as quick as you wanted, but that's the bottom line. If we don't have the assistance with the funding, we're going to shut down one of these two. That's just the bottom line.
I also will support wanting to work with the Heffernan, of course. But I do think it's very important and, and very unfair. We need to stay positive. And in the past administrations of anything that has occurred, we wanted to make sure you had Measure H in preparation because we knew that there's a lot of confusion out there. There sure is. There sure is. And a lot of this has a lot to do with numbers, bookkeeping, accounting, and things like that. And so, when we have negative statements about what happened in the past, and that really hasn't a burden on what it is right now, because if you do understand accounting and bookkeeping, it's factual. That's why we wanted to bring facts to you. And my suggestion today is get more facts. Learn what we brought today, which was the Measure H, so that these kinds of statements about how we handle Measure H, okay, get the facts. So that way, you are very aware of the facts, and that way, you know the big picture, and that way, whatever solutions that we may have, that there's a trust factor here, because you do have facts. You do have a city manager that can answer any of your questions, and why is it that we prepared today for you to know this information? And the fact that what you feel here is a lot of wanting to work together, and I think that's where we need to stay, is work together one way or another, because we don't have three cities here, we have one. And the funding that you all are using is for the exact same community we're working with. The only thing is, is that the shifting of how we can make this work, not just for us, but for Heffernan as well, so that Heffernan also commits and delivers towards those demands that are burdening us so much right now. And so, whatever we may do, if it's a quasi-agreement, if there's some payback, let's continue talking. Let's not be afraid of the fact that there's negativity from the past, because that's all settled. We already know where we stand. So if you want to learn it, learn it. If there was such a problem in Measure H, we would have had FBI here on that one too, and they were not. It was just a lot of confusion in our bookkeeping as we were settling in to a new tax program. I'm sorry, not tax program, software program. Tax program is me. I'm going to have to do that.
We don't have the resources. You have the resources. We don't.
Yes.
Currently, we're sorry to say, yeah, we do want to expand, and we do want to come up with a plan.
Does anybody else on the board...
And I agree, we do have the resources, but I believe that those resources can be allocated, in this case, to something related to healthcare. In this case, you mentioned that it is our fault, or it is the Heffernan's fault, that Collexico doesn't have a hospital, right? If I remember from a past conversation, it said that it closed down because it wasn't making any money, and it was in the negative around $30,000, something that the Heffernan Board could have subsidized, right, in this case, to maintain that hospital. Now, going back to the comment that you made, that are we putting a price on life, right? We're not putting a price on life. I mean, the thing is that, I mean, is the response going to be a little bit longer? It might. And yes, Mr. Pacheco, like you said, we have the money, but I forgot what I was going to say.
Because you can also think about another thing, too, which is...
Let him finish, let him finish saying what he has to say.
We have the money, but in this case, like you said, you don't know what Gold Cross is going to offer, one ambulance, two ambulances, but obviously, before making the decision, they're going to tell you what, you know, they're going to offer, right? So I don't think we should get them out of the picture and then just, you know, come to us for money. I'm willing to work with the city because we have before, but not just on granting an amount, a big amount of money, you know, moving forward. Now, what you mentioned about the fire department being either overworked or overpaid, I don't believe they're being overpaid, but maybe they're being overworked, right? But that's something that, if they're being overworked, obviously, we appreciate what they're doing for the city, but the cost in overtime for the city, that's a big amount of money that, you know, maybe could be reduced by hiring more people or, you know, looking into other options.
Does anybody else wish to...
Yeah. Besides this city council making the tough decisions, what is it that the city council, and you in particular, Mr. Real, are doing to better the affairs of the city? Are you looking into the future and trying to bring more revenue to the city? What is it that you're doing? You have a plan besides the doomsday scenario that you just mentioned?
Obviously.
And another thing is, we, in this city, have a very well-trained and very professional fire department and paramedics, and we probably will give that up if another ambulance comes in. So I'm still committed in following with the communication with you guys and see if we can work together.
Can I go ahead and answer?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Well, obviously, the council has worked on working with the unions to try and lower salaries, benefits, and all those things that are definitely, yeah, the highest in the county, and, you know, that's something that's been tried to do. Obviously, again, the council has looked at outsourcing, that didn't happen either. You know, the tough decisions that have to be made aren't being made. That's the reality. As far as bringing new revenue to the city, that's extremely tough. It takes years for that to happen. The city's history, if you pull the last 10 years, it makes the same amount of money. It's not, it goes up and down, very little. So we are a $14 million city. I don't care how we look at it. Measure H helps a little bit, but that's gone. And so, there's really nothing in the horizon that's going to bring us up $3 million. That's the reality. Unless somebody here wants to say that they have a plan for that, that that's what's happening. There's marijuana cultivation that might bring maybe a million in a couple of years, maybe, but our insurance is going up a million a year. So, you know, things are... Look, I know everybody wants to be positive, things are grim. That's the reality. Why are we lying to ourselves? If people want to lie to themselves, that's fine, but that is the reality. And I'm not going to lie to the public looking at home, or the things are not looking good. That's a reality. But the council needs to make tough decisions.
Well, if it takes years to bring revenue to the city, then this is the time to start.
And it's starting, but it takes years. We have homes being built, we have things coming, but you're talking four, five years down the road for that money to come in, the property taxes, you know, again, and it's not just bringing in revenue, it's lowering costs. You have to lower costs, bring in revenue, and even then, it's not easy. That's a reality. I would invite you guys to our budget meetings, so you guys can hear from Susan Mayer. Don't hear me, don't hear the council, hear a professional that can tell you what's going on. Last meeting she came up here, she said the city has to look at outsourcing. She said it up there. But what happens? Nobody wants to make these tough decisions. I understand there's lives at stake here, people that work for the fire department, but we're up here to make tough decisions. Nobody said this was going to be easy. You know, we will finish Measure H, we'll finish Heffernan, and then we'll find out who else we can ask money for, and then, wow, now that everything's gone, then we'll make the tough decision? We're kicking the can down the road. We're kicking the can.
Okay. Ms. Bernana, I guess we've probably talked a lot. Everybody's got a great opportunity to talk.
Nobody else here wants to say anything else?
No, just...
Mrs. Roman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. We need eight or two or three plans. It's very important for the next meeting, maybe for January or one week more, I don't know. But in my opinion, the emergency services is very important for this community, but it's very important to inform and, como dijo usted, Gonzalez, pedirle la opinión.
Dile.
Pedir la opinión a la gente, okay. Thank you. One way, for example, for my opinion only, my way, one way is to give us the opportunity to administer the ambulance services. Because Heffernan and the past administrator want hospital for 60 years, it's very, very the possibility administrator to complete this department for emergency services. Because I have the money, I have the, we have the experience, and you lost the, for your budget, $2 millions for salaries and overtime for department. No, all. Maybe tengo un presupuesto aquí que hizo el señor Martínez muy completo con el departamento. Estamos hablando de más de dos millones de dólares en pago.
Yeah. If I can clarify on that, it's, I wanted to look at the overtime that was being paid to firefighters. So there was a projection, I was given hours by 13 employees, and I projected the rest by averaging them out, and it came out to 2017, just in overtime. It was paid $576,000.
It's crazy.
Yeah, but you have to understand that the fire department is understaffed, and that's why you have overtime.
That's the problem.
That's, you can, that's a fantastic report Mr. Martinez did, but along with that, you have to understand that the overtime is there because there's lack of staff. So everybody has to turn over and work more hours.
But the thing is, is that, like, in this case, you know, if they're asking for $700,000, I mean, that's going to cover just the overtime and maybe, and then some, right? But it would go to salaries, that's what...
Well, that's why we need to, our board needs to go back.
Exactly, it shouldn't go to salaries.
Negotiate and to decide what we're going to do. And you need to decide how far you're willing to meet us or what we're willing to do to collaborate together, because all of us here, I think we want to help, and Mrs. Roma has a good idea, too, that, you know, we had, at one time, had come to Mr. Villa to ask you, what if we take over the ambulance services? And then that's when you told us that it was not a money-making thing, that we were going to lose money. Well, Heffernan is not in the business for making money. We're in the business to serving the community. That's what we're here for.
Saving lives.
How many of you have CPR licenses, too?
I did, but I need to renew it. Anyway, you know, Heffernan is not in the business to make a profit. We're a nonprofit organization, and we're here to provide services to this, to our community. We can't take over the ambulance services at this point in time, as was Roma was saying, but maybe later on, if we go ahead and do something for a three-year plan, or maybe by that time, or two years, I don't know, but maybe by that time, if you're still in the same situation that Mr. Real is saying that you're going to be in, then maybe Heffernan needs to start looking into wanting to take over the ambulance service. And by that time, we have already made progress to say, you know what, give us your 201, it will still be within the city, and let us... Because I know that we can't say, okay, next year, we're going to take over this. We can't. There's so much stuff that needs to be done, but if you see that within the next two or three years that this is not working out and it's getting deeper and deeper, give us, the Heffernan Board, the opportunity to take it over.
And I think that's a great idea. I mean, you guys are right here in front.
Yeah.
If we would have been doing this last year, you could have bought the...
We have a building, we have 400 Mary Avenue.
Or you could have bought the building that San Diego State just got rid of, right next to you. You know, that would have been perfect.
We have 400 Mary Avenue, Mr. Villa.
It doesn't sound very good.
Yeah. So, I mean, we have the facility to do it.
And the resources.
And we need, but we just need time to plan for it, you know? At one point in time, when we, when me and Mrs. Roma came to the city, we came with that idea, right, Mrs. Roma? And we were willing to take it over. And we know that it's not a money-making, but...
It will cost more than what we're making right now, yeah.
But you know what, Mr. Martinez? The money is sitting there, and nothing is being done with that money.
Yes, Ms. Bernana, I agree. The thing is, is that over the years, we would spend all our money, and we wouldn't have any savings. That's the thing. I mean, yes, we're...
We have to look into all of that.
We're bringing in $900,000 per year, and if it's going to cost us to run it, 1.5 million, you know, over the course of five years or six years, we're going to run out of money in the Heffernan Board.
You can always come and ask Collexico for a loan.
Exactly.
Yeah. We'll ask the city for a loan. That's why we need to decide, you know...
I believe that we need to have another meeting, Sylvia. Yes, we need to have another meeting.
Sure.
I would like to suggest to have another meeting, just to come with ideas with what we discussed tonight, and then we'll meet again.
Yes.
That would be the best thing.
Could I just close with one comment? I think it's important for everybody here to understand, my fellow council members, the board, and the public, that, you know, these are the cards that we've been dealt, the comments that were made. Here's the problem in government, and what we do now, the people that will be sitting here five years, 10 years down the road, they're not going to acknowledge that we did good things to, you know, make money in the future, the same way the past 20 years, the people that made the bad decisions that have us here are no longer here. And so, our council is not at fault for what's happened in the past 20 years. We're at fault for what's happened, you know, maybe these last couple of years, but the decisions, why the city's revenues are stagnant, why we didn't bring in business, it's not our fault here. It's people that did this in the past. And so, that's important for us to understand, that these are the cards we've been dealt.
And, you know, for the Heffernan Board, you might say that it's not a money-making business, but, I mean, the city is, like in this case, you know, Collexico's a $14 million city, right? In order for it to grow, it has to bring in more money, you know, more projects and everything, become a $60 million, $18 million. Why can't we become, you know, not just by raising the taxes, right, but why can't we bring in more money with different programs that we develop?
The good thing is, is that we're having the conversation, I think. There's a lot to talk about, obviously, a lot to share, a lot of facts. It's very important that the facts be shared, chief, very important. You know, your overtime issues and things like that, that they want to understand how you operate and why you operate as unique as you do. So the fact that we're just here and that we're talking together and that we're having the opportunity to express ourselves openly is going to allow us to go back to our boards, exactly like she's saying, and continue this conversation. I understand you want to go ahead and close up with a few more comments?
Town hall meeting.
Go ahead, Mr. Chief.
Si no vienen aquí, no van a ir allá.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to both of you guys for having this conversation.
Yeah. No interaction with the audience right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, and hopefully by tonight, we can just leave with direction. And the direction that I'm looking forward to is let's go on to the next stage. Tonight's meeting was just to introduce the idea, the idea of it. There's a lot of good comments on both sides, and I like them because it means that we're actually thinking. So I guess I just need direction to, like, can we continue with the conversation and take all the ideas, and at the end, let's come up with something that we're all in accordance with? You know, give us the opportunity to make the tough decision, like you say, and make the steps, but just, it sounds like we're both in agreeance to helping out.
I got to say...
I like Mr. Martinez's ideas. That's a good idea, if they can, you know, if we can break it down. Give me time to give you those numbers, and we can do that.
Let me, I would like to ask her...
I would like to say something.
May I, please?
Hold on a second. I have another request over here from Mr. Hodge. He hasn't really spoken very much.
Councilman Real has indicated there are tough decisions to be made. I'm going to put my academic hat on. Yeah, there is, but there are different ways of making those tough decisions. During World War II or even afterwards, '50s and '60s, this country grew, and it grew based on Keynesian, or Keynesian economics, which meant borrow and pay later. Now, that might make you shake in your boots, but that's how we grew, and we became very strong. Now, we have a huge deficit, but the other way is the conservative way, which lots of Latin American countries experience and suffer from, and that's that austerity way. And that's not the only way that you can make tough decisions. There are other ways that are more liberal and wider and can do the job, and we can still make the tough decisions and pay back what we need to make. So I just want to make that distinction, because one is pontificating, pontificating a very conservative way, and it's not the only way. It's not the reality or the truth or something.
May I just make an interjection as well, since everybody interjects? Does anybody remember that when you and I started seven years ago in 2010, the city actually had a $5 million deficit? Does anybody remember that?
Yeah.
Okay. We had a $5 million deficit when you and I started. So this is not the first time, what he's trying to say, you know, that it's just, we're still alive, we're still here, we're still breathing.
Yeah, we are.
I would like to give...
I would like to give...
350 employees.
Okay, so here comes your homework, chief, here comes your homework.
They only fired 200.
There we go.
You said that you were going to start working on upgrading the price for the ambulance services. We would like to see what the cost, you know, how much you're going to go up and how much that revenue that's going to bring into the fire department. I think that's something that we would like to see.
For sure. We can do that. We actually...
And when do you plan on enforcing it?
It started yesterday with Mr. David Dell. We made the outreach to the companies that can do that for us, so we can do that.
I think this is too much people...
And it started yesterday.
I know it has to come to the council.
I know it has to come to the council.
And, and like I stated yesterday, you know, whether or without the assistance of you guys, that's getting done regardless. That, that needs to get done. And it's, it's just gonna happen, so...
Now that we discovered it, it's not going away. What Councilman Real is suggesting is if it's possible that we all be able to meet once again as soon as possible.
Could I just...
But what he's suggesting is that if we can maybe assign each other...
I think, I think, I think there's too many heads here thinking, if, if our city manager could maybe create a, a subcommittee of the Heffernan, two, and then one from the council.
On a subcommittee, yes.
You guys, so we could have a subcommittee, two and two meet with the city manager, chief, um, or, and with your, um, Heffernan. You guys, you had, you guys don't have a CEO or anybody, right?
We already, all right, subcommittee.
That was gonna be my, my request, besides the direction given tonight, is if we could, uh, you know, condense it a little bit.
Yeah.
At the end, we're all, I mean, at the end, we're, we're all looking for the, the best of the community. That, that's all we want at the end.
You only need two people for the two for twenty, so...
I'm sorry?
You only need two people for the two for twenty.
Mr. Real, we've been meeting with, uh, since July with Mr. Villa. We've had a subcommittee. And right now, the subcommittee is Mr. Martinez and Mr. Valdez.
Okay. So the council would have to...
You need to get your own, then we can, we would. Not there anyway. I, I would just wanna close with, uh, with a closing comment, that I wanna say that, uh, you know, um, there's a lot of things that Hefferman is doing, and there's a lot of good things that Hefferman is doing. Um, and it would be nice to see people coming to our meetings, uh, because we make very, very tough decisions and we need to hear from the community. We need to know what your outcome, what your outcome is. We don't want for you just to come when you see us coming out in the newspaper. Uh, we would like for you to be there at our bi-weekly meetings and, so that you can voice, I know it's the same day, but we start at five thirty.
And, and also, how, how difficult is it to have a member of LAFCO at that meeting that you guys, that will, the city will be having, to make sure that this is done the right way?
Mr. Real, I'm, I'm glad you asked that question, because everything that's, that the Hefferman is doing right now, Mr. Hubert is aware.
Okay.
Um, I've been meeting with him almost bi-weekly. I've been telling him what we're doing. And one of the things that I asked him was that, that we were gonna have this meeting and I wanted to find out if it was okay to do it or if it was not. He said that, this is what he said, "We don't have a problem with you lending them the money. We have a problem with giving them all the money." So, um, he has our blessing as far as that, that is concerned with that, so... As I told him that we wanna make sure that what we're doing is what LAFCO expects from us to do. So, Mr. Hubert is aware of everything that's happening.
Okay.
Excuse me, Madam President. Excuse me, excuse me. Madam President, I have a question for Mr. Villa. I need, um, only one ques- last ques- last question, okay? Mr. Villa, una pregunta y se la voy a hacer en español. Yo he tenido dos conversaciones con usted para lo de las ambulancias. Y tengo una pregunta que no me quiero ir con ella. Si la ciudad estaba dispuesta a dejar ir las ambulancias, si no entienden des- como, qué significa dejar ir, o sea, quitarse las ambulancias, esa responsabilidad con el condado, eh, donde participaron, por qué pensar tanto en darle las ambulancias a G. Fernán? Lo digo porque yo tengo en mi corazón como ciudadana que paga taxis igual que todos aquí en Calixico. Yo tengo un pesar desde hace veinte años, cuando la ciudad vendió el edificio donde G. Fernán tenía el hospital. Y ese edificio fue vendido, pero también se quedó porque G. Fernán había sacado el contrato con Payonirz, que era tan buen contrato que hasta la fecha existe. Pero, sin embargo, decidió la ciudad vender ese edificio y G. Fernán se queda para lo que fue creado sin el edificio. Yo digo, fue porque la ciudad ocupaba dinero, por lo que sea, ya pasó. Pero por aquello que pasó, yo quisiera pedir el favor, que por lo menos lo pensáramos un poquito y nos devolvieran esa confianza, ya que decidieron ustedes quitarse las ambulancias en un tiempo y llevarlas al condado. Caray, ¿por qué no considerar? A nosotros, nosotros sí necesitamos como G. Fernán hacer ese servicio por mil cosas, principalmente por servir a la ciudadanía igual que ustedes. Pero más que nada porque para eso fuimos creados. Si no tenemos el hospital, la, el servicio de emergencia es algo importante. Yo entiendo que hay muchos empleados involucrados, entiendo toda la problemática y la política que tiene que ver con esto. Pero, sin embargo, hay que pensar que la ciudad también no necesita una carga de dos o tres millones de dólares en este momento. Y nosotros creo, mis compañeros y yo, podemos tener la experiencia. Obviamente nosotros no lo vamos a organizar, no lo vamos a administrar. Vamos a buscar quién lo haga, obviamente, como se hizo en aquel tiempo con el hospital. La pregunta para usted, ya no está con nosotros lamentablemente, pero su juicio y su manera de pensar me interesa. Por qué si estaban dispuestos a ceder las ambulancias a, a, al condado y por qué la piensan tanto para G. Fernán? ¿Cuál es la diferencia?
Well, I'm gonna answer you. I don't think that we ever made a decision to, to...
I know, you said...
We, we, we consider alternatives, just like we consider alternatives to Heffernan, because we're looking at every possible alternative to, to lessen the burden. We, we never, we were never there. We, we never made that decision. We were looking at it and we analyzed it. But to say that we were ready to do it, we, we were never there. The council never authorized that.
Fue una intención. Intention, fue una intención. Fue una estrategia y se pensó, bueno. Ay, no. No más quería dejarla en el aire porque habrá, la comunidad va a pensarlo, yo creo también.
No, no.
Mrs. Mayor, can I make a comment? Yes, it'll take one minute.
Please don't do to me what Mr. Gonzalez did.
I, I think...
Um, and you know that we can, uh, would you like to stay, say your comment out there, or would you wanna record it?
Thank you for your comment. I think if there's ever a board that can think on the ambulance service, we have it today. You know, Sylvia, with your background, with the unions, with your background in business, your background in running hospitals, yours working in here at the, uh, fire department. And you run in the clinic. We have a perfect team. So I think, and the transition time, you have it right here. And so it's something to consider and it would make us all happy, you know? We keep it, the Heffernan Board, we keep everybody hired. So think about that. You guys have a perfect team, if ever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, without anything else, uh, to add to the, today's meeting, I wanna really thank everyone for their cooperation.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
To adjourn, second. Let's get out of here.